...six, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM. It's not called a border. And good to be relieved and pleasant allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
City Clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Here.
Councilmember Panaya?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DVW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Finance and zoning Administrator?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
And City Engineer?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item eight A, which is a consideration of pilot ordinance seventeen oh eight, third coast development.
I would second that with an explanation from the city attorney.
I do?
I would second that with an explanation from the city attorney.
Certainly. The late last week, we had some discussions regarding the language in the proposed ordinance. The developer's attorney happened to be out of the country until very late last week. During those conversations, not only were there some requests that the developer was making with regard to the ordinance's language, but also we discussed some new topics that I thought warranted further discussion. And so the developer asked that we remove this matter from the agenda, and as the attorney, I supported that request. I would note for council, because there's some confusion about this ordinance, this is not a general ordinance of the city. This ordinance is in great part a contract between the city and that particular development. It's a site-specific ordinance. And so with respect to the motion, I'm supportive of that just because that will give us some additional time to hopefully get language that is acceptable to city staff and to the developer presented to council so that you'll have enough time to review it instead of bringing it to you tonight with changes. And we hope that that may occur maybe before the work session, certainly before the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion by councilmember Cooper and a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski to amend the agenda to remove item eight A, consideration of pilot ordinance seventeen dash oh eight, third coast development. Is there any discussion?
So it's possible that we'll have the changes before our work sessions so that we can discuss them? Is that the plan?
I think that's a possibility. We also talked meeting, then there'd be a special meeting scheduled. You have language that is acceptable to all sides.
I think that would be good to do it before our next council meeting.
If everything comes together, that's right, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yep.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Panaya?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak on agenda-related items. Please approach, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Yes, Gary Potowski, one fifty-nine Quincy Street, suburban residence. First, I want to acknowledge our new council members. You know, I wasn't here when you guys got elected. I'm glad to see you guys on board. Glad we have a new mayor. Good that see things are coming together here for us. I know that one of the topics on the agenda is going to be reviewing the financials for the month, and I got some questions that hopefully can be answered during that session. And regards to, first of all, fund number two hundred and ninety-six, which is the beloved Ram'sel Theater, and I'm questioning, does eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars and eighty-seven cents expense transfer out against a budget of zero? And then in fund number two hundred and ninety-seven, Ram'sel Theater, Ram'sel Regional Center, I've got questions as to the, we have two amounts there. One is a contribution from local government, budget seventy thousand, the amount year-to-date was fifty-two thousand, five hundred, but then there's also a transfer in with a budget of zero and a year-to-date of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-three cents. So if I'm reading everything right, once again, the revenue is about seventy thousand dollars less than the full-year budget right now, and it looks like in that actual amount, which is below budget, is a out-of-budget contribution of some sort or transfer in about sixty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Jim Matthews, I was, I wanted to comment on that agenda item that was removed, but I, but I won't. This topic, the first gentleman brought up, brought to my attention, part of my concern, and that is the budget, the city budget, and the, I spent most of my life in business, but I did spend three months, three years, sorry, in state government. I don't understand, we have a CFO. Why doesn't the CFO prepare a report at this meeting to explain some of the finances that are, that are being discussed? For instance, the, the topic of the development, as citizens, we try to get the information on it, the straight scoop on, and what's going to be the cost or the benefit to the city. And, you know, the information we've had so far has been kind of a, kind of a net revenue loss to the city. And I look at the budgets, too, and I don't see any, any room for the, for the city to actually give on that. But yet, the two pilots that were suggested so far are absolutely that. And I believe that Mr. Bradford should be here, and he should prepare the finances on these proposals and present to the citizens in a way that they can understand how a deal like this, because it's complicated, and you have to, and we don't have a direct source of information. He should explain to the citizens how this is going to affect the tax base of the city, which directly affects the services the city can provide to the citizen at large. So, so I'd like to make sure that, I mean, I'd like to make a recommendation or a suggestion that in the, in the future meetings, that Mr. Bradford is here to discuss the finances of the city and, and provide the exact position on proposals that are being made and what it's going to do to the finances, because there is no room in this budget, and I'll stand corrected if somebody wants to put me there. But looking at the budget, I see things shoved around, shoved, taken off the budget, put into a five-year capital improvement plan because they couldn't fit in the budget, although the sponsor that put it in the budget swore up and down it was needed this year, but don't move the budget, so it got out, pushed out five years to a capital improvement plan. So I don't think it's fiscally responsible, and the town needs to maintain, maintain its economy. And by, by investing in things that, that draw from the, from the, from the city rather than, rather than actually add to the city, it's a downward spiral. And, and the town has to get off of that and get from, from, from the kind of bottom feeding at the drop of the state to attracting real business because it's going to bring jobs here for the people here and revenue here for the town. That's, it's frustrating to see it go the other way. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Are there other citizen comments on agenda-related items? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, consideration of zoning amendment Z seventeen dash zero two, wireless communications facility, consideration of zoning amendment Z seventeen dash zero three, parking standards, consideration of zoning amendment Z seventeen dash zero four, miscellaneous items, consideration of zoning amendment Z seventeen dash zero five, dumpster standards, consideration of zoning amendment Z seventeen zero six, signs, notifications regarding the next work session, consideration of VFW poppy campaign, a buddy poppy campaign, and consideration of annual Roots on the River event. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by councilmember Beaton and a second by councilmember Gudsky. Is there any discussion? Please take role.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Panaya?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
New business. Consideration of a resolution of support for House Bill four four one one, municipal slash civic liquor licenses. State law MCL four three six point one five zero nine provides for municipal civic auditorium liquor licenses for communities with a population greater than nine thousand, five hundred. This type of license would be appropriate for the Ram'sel Theater to use in conjunction with events held at the theater and allow it to diversify and enhance its revenue stream and become more financially stable. The city would qualify for this license if the population threshold was lowered. The Ram'sel Regional Center for the Arts has approached Representative Kirk Vanderwall regarding the issue, and he has introduced House Bill four four one one to reduce the population requirement from nine thousand, five hundred to five thousand, five hundred. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution of support for House Bill four four one one, reducing the population requirement from ninety-five hundred to fifty-five hundred in MCL four three six point one five zero nine.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mark?
Yes, Whitlam.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by councilmember Whitlam. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I have some questions. Do we have anybody from the Ram'sel Regional? Oh, you're set. I guess, if, if this were to become law, do you foresee the Ram'sel would be serving alcohol or have that available to purchase at every event that they have, or how do you think it's going to?
I don't think it would be at every event. I think it would be at appropriate events, and, you know, it would depend on what was there. The biggest thing that it would let the Ram'sel do is be able to go to a solo concessionaire for weddings, so we would be the person that would supply the liquor then, you know, we'd just make that part of the contract. So that would be helpful, but, you know, if you wanted to do things, for instance, at the gala, we had to get a special liquor license, we could serve it there. The law specifically prohibits us from just having regular hours where people can walk in, so it's designed to be coordinated with events that are at the theater.
I guess I was just thinking more of, you know, where we have children's, a children's ?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be intending to serve liquor at those types of events.
Okay. That's all clarification.
Parents.
Well, I was hoping that the parents would just agree to.
Are there any other questions regarding this?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Mr. Bradford. The, I think one of the comments I got from, from the public with this item on there was the, one of the selling points of the Ram'sel is that people go to a performance and after a performance, then they'll eat and drink downtown and, and, you know, go to these various businesses and stuff. Do you, do you see that having any impact?
There's, there's a potential for the impact, but as I said, this is only in conjunction with some of the events. This is an attempt for the city and for the Ram'sel Regional Center for the Arts to try to move the Ram'sel towards more sustainability. We have the ability to go get one-time liquor license, but you've got to apply for them every single time. And this law was specifically written, not, not the draft amendment, but when it was put on the books, to allow facilities like the Ram'sel to be able to, you know, offer more services to the public. So I think it's an appropriate fit for this type of thing. I don't see this as any different as some of the redevelopment liquor licenses that, you know, can be issued in communities. They're expanding the, the number of places that can serve liquor.
Is, is the intent to serve alcohol mostly at, at events that also have food, or, or is it at performances also?
I mean, I think, I think we would do it with, with weddings, obviously, but I think there would be some performances that that would be tailored to. For instance, the Irish Festival that we had this spring, that would be something that we would probably serve liquor at. Would we be doing it at the Metropolitan Opera? Maybe not. Maybe we would have wine there at intermission or something, but that's during the day, typically on a weekend. That may or may not have that. So I think it would really depend on what the event.
Okay. And this sort of resolution doesn't, is strictly for the House consideration, right?
Correct. This, yes, this is the first step in the process. It has to go to a committee hearing, and it has to go to a full house, and if, if it's reported out of the House, then it goes to the Senate Committee.
And if it was passed and became law, then the process would have to be repeated through city council again to get the liquor license.
Right, there's an application process. And the law gives a lot of flexibility as to who actually applies for that, but ultimately city council still has to approve that, whether it's the city that's applying or the Ram'sel Regional Center for the Arts. Okay? Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Panaya?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of the purchase of an aerial lift. The city owns and maintains multiple buildings and assets that require unique equipment to assist with maintenance. It has been determined that the purchase of a quality used aerial lift is more cost-effective than renting. Quotes have been solicited, and a machine has been identified which meets the city's needs, has low hours of operation, and is within the budgeted funds. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase of a Genie S sixty-five aerial lift from Illinois Lift Equipment for the total delivered price of thirty thousand, fifty dollars.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by councilmember Gudsky. Is there any discussion?
This is in our budget, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I think it's an excellent purchase, Mr. McCullough. What's the rent on those today?
I don't know what the daily rental is. What we did was, was took the last two projects that the facility director has, has rented, and I think it totaled close to seventeen thousand dollars. So we've got several projects that he's intending to do that we budgeted for the repair and maintenance of, and at some point, it's just worthwhile for us to, to have the equipment in-house. And we decided that it wasn't prudent to, to buy a brand-new vehicle, so we worked with mechanic to determine what, what level of used vehicle he thought he'd hold us for the, you know, years to come, and then made sure that the equipment was appropriate for what Mark Hanson believed was he needed for the building. So that's how we went about budgeting it and then went out and got quotes for it.
Thank you. Has anyone looked at this piece of equipment? Have we looked at it, or has it been a demo, or is this strictly a transaction?
We have not looked at it in person. They've sent us some of the maintenance records on it, some of the history for it, and they've sent us photos of it and all the data, so.
Do you have recourse if it gets here and you don't like it?
I would have it delivered and inspected, and, yeah, certainly we wouldn't cut the check unless we're satisfied with it.
Any other discussion? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Panaya?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours Block Party. Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce has requested authorization to hold a Business After Hours Block Party on Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, from five-thirty PM until eight PM. They are requesting that River Street be closed between Jones Street and Cross Street from ten AM until nine PM for setup and teardown. They are also requesting that barricades and snow fence be installed. This event is sponsored by West Shore Community College and is a wrap-up of their year-long fiftieth anniversary celebration. The event will be catered by the Ironworks Cafe. At this time, council could take action to authorize the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours Block Party on June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, subject to appropriate departmental approvals.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by councilmember Whitlam. Is there any discussion?
I guess I'm just curious why they need so much time to close it down for this event that doesn't start till five-thirty. I'm just curious. Is anybody here to answer that?
Good evening. Stacy from the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce. I think that was requested just so that they could work with Ironworks Cafe so they can get set up, and then the college, all the tables, the tenant company is going to be coming, so there's a lot of logistical things that they wanted to make sure that they had enough time to work with the tenant company, the college to get their things, and then for Ironworks Cafe to have enough time to set up as well.
Can you give me an estimate, a rough estimate, of how many people you think will be there?
We're hoping anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty people. It's a family-friendly event, so we're hoping people, it's not just a typical business after-hours, it's for the community, so hoping people will bring their families out to that event as well.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk, would you please take role?
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Panaya?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Consideration of Manistee County Humane Society Cruising for Critters fundraiser. Manistee Ford is sponsoring the annual, annual Cruising for Critters fundraiser for Manistee County Humane Society and Homeward Bound Animal Shelters on Monday, July third, two thousand seventeen, from four PM until seven PM. They were set up at the Armory Youth Project Parking Lot, five-five-five First Street. For every test drive completed, Ford makes a donation to Homeward Bound. At this time, council could take action to authorize the annual Cruising for Critters event on July third, two thousand seventeen, subject to appropriate department approvals.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Go ahead.
I have a motion by councilmember Beaton, a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion? Please take role.
Councilmember Panaya?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Notices, Communications, and Announcements. A report from Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce, Manistee County Leadership Program. Results of the recent Imagine Manistee Community Project will be presented by members of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, Manistee County Leadership Program participants.
Good evening. I'm Marion Bane. I'm from Launch Manistee. Rachel David from the Volk Theater and Tamara DePonyo from Forefront Credit Union. We're here, we wanted to go over the results of our event, which was held on May ninth. It was called Imagine Manistee. It was a project that our leadership team, there were only three, there were three of us, there were twelve of us altogether, it was not just the three of us. It was proposed to us by city manager, by Thad Taylor, to have this event to get some information from residents of the city of Manistee as well as Manistee County in regards to what they would like to see in downtown Manistee. So what we're here for tonight is to share the results of that survey. We had an amazing event held at the Volk Theater. We had over a hundred people in attendance, and so we'd like to start by showing, I think you have a video that was developed by the Manistee High School Video Production Class that we let off the evening. We'd like to share that with you first, and then we'll go over the results from the survey.
Imagine a safe, affordable, friendly place to retire. Imagine a place to fish, sail, and sun. Imagine a community whose members work together to make Manistee a place to live today and This vision becomes possible as a grassroots citizens engagement when we come together as a community. That's neighbors, visitors, business owners and citizens alike. So it all starts with you, mobilizing to move Manistee forward and build a more vibrant place to live.
Imagine Manistee.
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 So our committee with input from...
So our committee with input from some of the different strategic plans, some market research that had been done previously, as well as some input from the community, we developed a survey. It was a real-time survey, so the people that were in the theater actually gave their results, and then they were up on the screen at the same time. And so we had a series of questions, as you'll see when we go through the results, to try to gather that information about what the citizens want to see or some of their preferences. We also, at the end of the survey, we also gathered some comment cards, which we also will share with Mr. Taylor. But these are the actual results of the survey, and I'm going to turn it over to our emcee of the evening, that evening, Brandon David, who was up there as we were doing it, to maybe just quickly go through some of the results.
So quickly, we'll just go run through this so we can get the better stuff. We just did some demographics questions at the beginning, and obviously there's some age there. Our fifty-plus was over half of the room, and I think that's around thirty-six to fifty was the other thirty percent. So gender, females ruled the room that night. This is a, you'll see later on that this is a good idea to see that the females ran the room, and then residence status, full-time, and then we just had only three seasonal people in the room that night. Residents of the city, seventy versus thirty-four, and then employment status, we, full-time, part-time, retired, none, and then total in household, forty-seven of the people that had two-person households. So here's our first question was, what kind of restaurants would you like to see downtown? Obviously, we've got, the biggest choice there was ethnic, a brew pub, which we've got, you know, under construction now, healthy alternatives, delis, so forth and so on. Shopping, the reason why I mentioned the women, but all the women said they want men's apparel downtown, which I was really impressed with, so like, apparently we all had jeans and t-shirts on there. And then women's apparel, they want beer, wine, and liquor, general merchandise, so forth and so on down the line. And then for recreation, the number-one item on the agenda, the question was riverwalk improvements, bike rentals, some parks for gatherings and green space, some bike lanes. My big choice was dogs allowed on the riverwalk, since I have four dogs. And then bike racks again, or bike, yeah, there's lots of biking stuff. And then kayak launch, all this other good stuff. Entertainment, we were looking for a live music venue. We didn't really stipulate whether that was indoor or outdoor, or whether it was this, you know, year-round sort of venue. Closed street events, for example, the block party down the street on the fifteenth. Special events, more a comedy venue, and then dance club was the last on the list. The businesses that the crowd was looking for that night was a bakery, butcher, or meat market, Makerspace. For example, they've got one in Luddington, a Makerspace where you can go in and build, they have all the tools and all the wood there, and you can go in and build something on the inside of it by paying a price. It's part of the New Economy Stores that they were looking for, New Economy being right under there as well, pet store downtown, another hotel, shared office space. So there was kind of the leaning towards the New Economy stuff, which is very nice to see as well. Living downtown, the refurbishing of businesses to include housing. What they meant was on River Street specifically, that the second stories become better housing units for the public in large, a range of housing options, more market-based housing, affordable housing, single-family housing. We kind of didn't, you know, we didn't really word out what we wanted for, but that's, people want to live downtown. And then our access, on the businesses, we want to ask the businesses to be open later, more consistent hours. There was a request for citywide Wi-Fi, so if, you know, the tourists came into town, they could, you know, pay a fee to the city or whatever for, you know, two dollars for twenty-four hours worth of service or that effect. Businesses open more days, public transportation more reliable in scheduling, and then some marketing kiosks downtown, better signage to get downtown. And then, I think that's it, it is. So do you have any questions? We are sorry, we scheduled it on a night that you couldn't join us, so. You missed a good party.
I think, I think you, thank you very much for all the time and energy you went into this. Anytime we survey people and get both residents and non-residents, we'll sit together and look at what the public desires are, take those into consideration, do what we're hired and elected to do as public officials, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you very much for the time.
Any other questions or comments? Next, we have a report from the Brownfield Consultant and the Public Works Department. Regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization or department. At this time, Mr. T. F. Tidus will report on the activities of the Brownfield Consultant and respond to any questions the council may have regarding those activities.
T couldn't be here with us tonight, so as the Brownfield Administrator, I'll be giving the presentation. Just a little bit of a review, the Brownfield Authority's been in existence for a little over a decade, was established in June of two thousand and six under the Redevelopment, Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act. That act has undergone a number of revisions since that time, and the legislature is looking at amending it even more as they look to consolidate some of the tax increment financing districts, so it's kind of something that it's important to keep up on as staff. Members of the board are Clinton McKinnvan Copas as our chair, Don Cook as the vice-chair, Steve Brower as the secretary and treasurer, Megan Camp, Jeff Steggi, and Marlene McBride are members, and we have one vacancy on the board. I'm the administrator, Denise Blakesley does an excellent job as our recording secretary, and T. F. Taxietas is our consultant. The board meets as needed. The city council approved a change of the bylaws several months ago that allowed for that, and that's actually worked out well. We had needed to meet the first part of this year, we did just have a meeting earlier today, and we'll probably be having another one in July or August, depending on what comes in front of us, so it gives us some flexibility to not have meetings that aren't needed. Quickly, just some of their responsibilities and authorities. The mission of Brownfield Authorities is to redevelop brownfield properties, and by brownfield, we mean things that are contaminated, that's the most common definition of that, but it also includes functionally obsolete properties, which are properties that no longer conserve the purpose for which they were constructed, blighted properties or historic properties. That definition has expanded over time, and so a lot more properties become eligible for brownfield plans. Some of the things we can do are undertake environmental assessments and cleanups, we can pursue and receive federal grants, and the Brownfield Authority has received some EPA grants in the past. We can accept state grants and loans, we did that for the American Materials Project, capture tax increment financing revenues, that's is what's being done for the Edgewater and North Channel Outlet Project. So we've done quite a bit of what brownfields are able to do. We can create a local site remediation revolving fund, we can own mortgage or lease real property or real estate, borrow issued bonds, notes, and invest assets or acquire foreclosed property. We haven't done any of those. Some funding sources for the Brownfield Authority, applicant fees. We are looking at possibly having a couple plans coming forward, which I'll talk about in a little bit, but those will require the applicant to pay fees at various parts in the process. We can capture administration fees from any TIF capture, and then once we develop a local site remediation revolving fund, we'd be able to garner some revenue from that. Currently, we don't have any grant funding, the EPA grants have run out several years ago, and in the past, we had almost one and a quarter million dollars worth of grants. Currently, the Brownfield project that everybody is seeing and is the most visible in the community is the South Washington area, which includes the Edgewater Project and the North Channel Outlet Project. There was two components to that Brownfield plan, there was public infrastructure and private infrastructure, and these are some pictures of some of the private, or the public infrastructure. There was the retaining wall, helps support Short Street and support the project, the sewer pump station, which you can see in the lower picture, water main extension, and then there was a little bit of work done on Washington Street as well, so that's the work that's been done so far on that. For the private part of the redevelopment, Edgewater is about ninety-eight percent complete, they've sold several units. The few things that are remaining is they're actually going to paint that dark green color a little bit lighter color, and you can see a sample of that as you drive on Washington Street, they have a small section painted in that. So they have to finish that up, they have to finish up a little bit of landscaping, but the building is basically done, it's been well received. Phase two is the North Channel Outlet, that's a pretty recent picture. They're hoping to have the brewery restaurant in in July twenty seventeen, apartments be done by November twenty seventeen, and then we'll start the TIF capture on that for twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, depending on when it totally gets done. I went through that building today, it's remarkable the amount of progress that they're making on that. They did get a community development block grant through the city for that project, and actually our third-party administrator was on-site today, doing the compliance monitoring for that, checking with the employees, making sure they're getting paid the Davis Bacon wages, that's progressing very well. We'll probably be submitting our first application to the state to get some of that money back and get it in the hands of the developers so they can continue on with the project. They're making great progress on the lower level where the brewery is, they're supposed to start delivering some of that equipment sometime next week, if all goes according to plan, so they really are moving ahead, and it's going to be a real nice addition to the community. Recent Brownfield Authority activities, mainly in terms of technical services. Our consultant, T, has provided consulting with the Hotel Northern Music Vault, which is the former bookmark store, the Matt's Vocational Center, which is right adjacent and across the street from the North Channel Outlet, Memory Lane Detailing, which is on River Street, and then I just wanted to report on Joslin Cove, which is a county Brownfield project, but as you may recall, city council had to approve a new development agreement with the developer. They were anticipated getting started this spring, as early as they could, but one of the big hurdles that they had to clear was they had to get approval from the state to forego having to repay a little over a million dollars in tax credits because they didn't complete the original project on time. That paperwork is down in Lansing, it's worked its way through the system, and it's sitting on one of the deputy state treasurer's desks, and Rob Carson, who is the lead on this because it is a county project, has inquired us to the status of that, and they wouldn't give him a timeframe as to when that was going to be approved or not approved, they said it's on his desk. So I'm assuming that once that gets approved, we'll see some activity there, but until we have trucks on-site and construction starting, I think that's when we'll actually know. So I'm sure Rob will be keeping close tabs on that. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Jeff McCula will report on the activities of Department of Public Works and respond to any questions council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening. There's really five major functions that make up Public Works in the city of Manistee. They include the utilities, our fleet, the parks, refuges, and streets. The Public Works is broken down by a director, a deputy director, administrative assistant, ten full-time people in the street department, six seasonal people, two full-time people in the parks, and currently seven part-time in the parks, and then eight full-time in the utilities. The administration, I mentioned this last year, but Kathy fields over just hundreds of phone calls every day from residents with inquiries, questions, concerns, does a phenomenal job of helping people through what our processes are and addressing their concerns and questions. We also handle project management for various construction projects in the city. As you can see in the picture, this is half of Eighth Street that was recently resurfaced, along with the other paving projects that we have and approved on an annual basis. This year included the return activated sludge pumps, which is kind of the heart of the treatment plant, the SAW grant, which is close to two million dollars to study the sewer system, both the sanitary and the storm sewer, and to develop asset management programs for those. That's currently being contracted through our engineer Spicer Group. And then upcoming would be the Twelfth Street Reconstruction Project, which includes the block from Oak Street to Maple, and then we're going to also do a block of Oak Street from Ninth to Twelve. The contractor had anticipated being able to begin next week when school got out, they're looking for a window in their schedule when they can bring a crew up here, and so that window did not open up next week, so it will start later on this month, we expect, and certainly we'll get out notices when we're contracted for that. We manage eleven different budgets within those five categories that I discussed. We do a tremendous amount of reporting and compliance reporting through the Department of Transportation and the Department of Environmental Quality. We handle all the purchasing and planning for those various departments, as well as construction projects, and then especially in the past year, we've done a tremendous amount of work and spent a lot of time with prospective developments coming in, doing plan reviews, researching infrastructure opportunities, and really trying to help those developers put together a plan to move forward. Talking specifically about the street department, we handle all the winter maintenance of the forty-eight miles of city streets, which include, and the seventy miles of sidewalks. That includes snow plowing, salting, sanding as necessary. We complete road maintenance, such as street sweeping, catch basin cleaning. This year will begin, this summer will begin, an annual crack sealing program as well, and we'll be running equipment and doing that work in-house. We replace sidewalks and maintain those. I think we've made tremendous progress in the last few years on getting more of those trip hazards and large cracks addressed, and our program is to continue section by section going through the city and addressing as many of those as we can. Our forestry work, if you just drive through the city and think about the thousands and thousands of trees that line our boulevards and are within our parks, the crews cut down probably forty to sixty trees a year that the Tree Commission has approved and been determined to be dangerous or dying or even damaged. And we also do weekly brush pickup this time of year, we've got crews out two to three days a week, just trying to keep up with the brush requests. I'd also like to make a point and just a reminder that the city policy is, if you bring brush out to the street, call the Public Works Department, call the office, and be added to the list. We create that list so that we can forecast how much time we think it's going to take for the crew to work, and if we need to add them, if it's going to take more than the Friday that we plan on, then we can add Thursday or even on a Wednesday to supplement that. People always ask why we drive by the piles, and it's because we work off that prescribed list, so that's just a reminder. We maintain a contract with the Department of Transportation for maintenance on US-31, and then we also have a contract with the Highway Department to operate the Maple Street Bridge, I'm sorry, with the US-31 Bridge, and we also operate the Maple Street Bridge. Just some highlights in the street department, we've experienced a tremendous amount of turnover through retirements the last couple of years, and I know that we've got probably two to four additional guys coming up this year. We've been very fortunate to have good candidates to replace them by. This past year, we purchased two new trucks. Like I said, we've enhanced our sidewalk program, and we brought a lot of that work in-house to further extend the monies that are budgeted. We've had, added some summer help as part of the next item, which is the Maple Street Bridge operation. As you recall, in the current, or the upcoming budget, the city is going to take on operation of the Maple Street Bridge with full-time union employees as opposed to seasonal employees, and through a new law passed by the state of Michigan, we're reimbursed a hundred percent for those expenses, and the net effect was that it actually saves citizens money and we added some full-time jobs to the community. Brine production, which is the picture that you see here, we actually make brine to pre-wet our salt before we put it down on the streets, and that activates the salt faster, but it also makes it more effective, and we can put additives in it and reduce the temperatures or reduce... And we can put additives in it and reduce the temperatures, or reduce, we can increase the temperature range by which the salt is effective. That in conjunction with the new salters that we purchased in the last three years has reduced our salt consumption by almost fifty percent. So if you assume that we're spending eighty thousand dollars a year in salt, and we've reduced that down to forty, that's forty thousand dollars that goes right back into road maintenance and paving projects. We've also invested very little of money in equipment to, I got some pictures, I think, yep, to do some manhole rehabs in-house. As you can see, the picture on the left is a manhole that's, or it's a casting that's over a manhole. The manholes are pretty fixed in their elevations. Sometimes the roads will settle over time. And everybody knows when you drive over them, when you get that thump, thump. It's kind of irritating. It can be dangerous to cars. But it's particularly hard on the operators and the snowplows when they hit them. So we use a thermoplastic material. The manhole on the right, because of the height of it, it was probably about a hundred and fifty dollars of that material. We're able to layer that up. It becomes bonded to the pavement and helps save the public's vehicles, but also the equipment that we're using. The picture on the left is one of our crews just replacing some sidewalks in town last year and then setting a Christmas tree for the Sleigh Bell Festival on the right. In fleet maintenance, we repair and maintain over fifty-five vehicles and pieces of equipment in our fleet. We assist the motor pool for purchasing, just like we did tonight with that aerial lift, but then also for scheduling and trying to anticipate those expenses over time. And then we've done tremendous improvements in the past year on preventative maintenance, which we think will reduce overall repair costs in the future, but also extend the life of our vehicles. One example of what capability we have in-house, that's a picture of two engines. The engine in the front is a diesel engine that came out of our Charrington Beach Cleaner. It actually failed, the lower end failed, just due to the amount of dust and sand in the environment that it operates in. The guys were able to source a brand-new engine, almost identical to it, and replace that in-house a hundred percent. So we didn't have to pay out any labor expenses. The engine was a little over three thousand dollars. Normally, that kind of expenditure would have been eight to ten thousand dollars. Our parks department, later on in July, both the utilities and the parks will be given more detailed information, so I'll just give you a few highlights tonight. We maintain eighteen city parks, which includes mowing, all repairs, upgrades, cleaning, picking up leaves, everything you can imagine. We're responsible for daily cleaning of nine restrooms throughout the community that are open to the public. We install and maintain the ice rink during the summer, beach cleaning activities, emergencies. We've got guys that are available at any time. Somebody gets locked in the bathroom, there's a toilet overflowing. Those guys respond to that stuff twenty-four-seven. And then this year, as part of the budget process, we've also absorbed the contracted work that the DDA put out for maintenance of the Riverwalk and the Central Business District. So that was one of the reasons why we added one part-time person in our parks department. And we met with them, walked, and made sure that what we're completing is what they're expecting. And so so far, I think that's off to a pretty good start. Last year, we completed a round of improvements at Fifth Avenue Beach. Like I mentioned, the DDA contract, we managed the Riverwalk erosion that was repaired behind Riverside Motel. The City Marina, we also used to contract out the mowing and maintenance for the grounds at the City Marina in the islands along Cherry Street and First Street. We absorbed those in-house and just trying to reduce the out-of-pocket expenses to the city. And then the parks department and the street department really support almost twenty different festivals. They could be anything from just sending out a few picnic tables to, like the request that was here tonight, setting up fencing, barricades, and that sort of thing. This is a picture of our crew pouring the pads for the shade structures down at Fifth Avenue. And I took this picture, I believe, yesterday. We've got the grills installed, picnic tables are in place. If you remember, when we had the conceptual plan put together by the engineering firm, the cost estimates for this were in excess of a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We were able to find the shade structures, which is the same manufacturer as the one that's down at Rocket Park. They provide the same intent. The maintenance costs are much, much less on these than a wooden structure or even a steel structure. And with the guys pouring all the concrete in-house and doing all the assembly of this work, we were able to perform that for a little over twenty thousand dollars. So we're pretty proud of that. And on the refug side, as you're aware, we contract out the household waste on a weekly basis with Republic Services. We maintain the recycling center, and I think that's been working out very well. With the addition of some cameras, we've seen some of the abuse reduced down. And the guys are making sure that they're checking on that and keeping it clean. Because if we let it accumulate, it seems to attract more abuse. We've added, as you're aware, we have a compost bin there where you can bring your yard waste. We also have a bin for putting brush. So if you don't want to wait till our weekly pickup, you're more than welcome to bring it down there. And we also have been stocking another bin with a composted yard topsoil that we create every year. And actually, that's been pretty popular. We're having to bring loads in there every couple of weeks. On the bottom is a scrap tire collection. That was something that we did new this year. The household hazardous waste program was kind of a dual program that the county already does in August. So working with Republic, we decided to try to come up with something that would be a benefit to the citizens that they already didn't have. From my perspective, that collection last Saturday exceeded, they exceeded my expectations. That semi was almost full by eleven-thirty in the morning. We had some citizens help, and then our guys worked with a representative from Republic Waste, and that went extremely well. The cost to dispose of those tires is being paid for by an MDEQ grant. And so next year, we'll look for another program that'll be unique and different and can be a benefit to the community. Here's a picture from the newspaper. By the way, Mike said he's the, he was sorer that night than, how long did you say?
I was sorer at nine o'clock at night. I was on the first day, day after my first day of cross-country practice in ninth grade.
But it was well worth it.
Never been so sore in my life.
I've got a series of photos that just kind of shows you the process that we take to turn our yard waste into composted topsoil. These are the bags that the guys pick up, that people put out on the street every week. Those just get stockpiled into giant piles. In the fall, we, in the fall, that pile probably triples to quadruples in size when we add all the leaves to it. We mix all that, and we build it in windrows. We use the EPA's best recommended practices for composting. So those are constructed in windrows to try to optimize the bacteria, breakdown of the organic matter. And those get, those piles get turned every two years. After about two years, maybe three years, depending on weather conditions, we then bring in a screening machine. And this was done last fall. We've got a little bit more to do yet this spring. That screening machine will take out all the debris, all the bags. Those bags are actually made of a corn-based material. But sometimes, if they haven't broke down, that gets separated out. Also, pieces of wood, rock, whatever else gets thrown in those bags. And then what comes out the other end of the machine is some pretty nice material. We use that material in-house for all of our utility dig jobs, projects that we do in the parks. And we've got in excess of it, so that's why we made some available to the citizens also at our recycling center. Like I said, the utilities will be given a much more detailed report next month. But the water system maintains fifty-three miles of mains. We have four water wells that are in operation, two water towers that store water, provide pressure to the system. In two thousand sixteen, we pumped close to three hundred and twenty-five million gallons of water. So that's close to a million gallons a day on average. That'll drop to about seven hundred thousand during the wintertime. And during the summer, when our tourists are here and all the seasonal residents and people are irrigating, the daily pumping totals can go, can exceed three million gallons. In two thousand, at the wastewater treatment plant, of course, we've got one plant. We've got thirteen different pump stations that pump sewage to various points in the city. There's over forty-six miles of underground piping that we maintain. And actually, we collected three hundred and seventy gallon, about three hundred and seventy million gallons of sewage, treated it, stripped all the contaminants out of it, and restored it back into Manistee Lake. With that, I wouldn't entertain any questions you have.
I have one. You mentioned the Saw Grant. And I know we've been doing some flow monitoring, and we've been doing a lot of televising. Where are we at with that? It seems like this has been going on forever.
And it's about two-thirds done. The Saw Grant is a three-year process. So if I miss something, Sean will jump up and let me know. But we've done complete inventories of mapping in the surface through scanning of the streets. We have, we're probably, what, eighty percent done with the cleaning, televising?
On the sanitary sewers, still in the storm sewer.
Yeah, so we're about eighty percent done with the cleaning and televising of the sanitary sewers that we had targeted. It won't do a hundred percent of the sewer system. And then we still have the cleaning and televising of portions of the storm sewer system. The engineers have visited all of our facilities and worked with our staff to catalog all of our equipment, all of our processes. And so, you know, date, age, maintenance histories, and so all of that data. Most of the work that's being done now is actually processing all that data and putting it in a usable format for the asset management plan.
So in your opinion, we have a timeline here. We have a date that we're, I forget what that date is. Is it two years or a year out? How far out?
It's a three-year process to, that you're allowed to expend the funds towards the Saw Grant. Pardon me, think we are.
Well, sir, it's next October of twenty eighteen, exactly. We're required to be done, likely possibly be done a little bit earlier because we're trying to get things in order for D and Q requirements on your NPDS.
So, yeah, so there's two things. There's one, there's a deadline for us to complete the work to be grant-eligible, which we don't have, see any issues with that. But the scheduled dates in our NPDS permit are more aggressive than any of that. So the Saw Grant work is being accelerated in order to help us meet our requirements as part of our discharge permit.
When does our CSO permit expire?
It's a five-year permit that just started in January of seventeen.
Okay, so in your opinion, are we on, are we on schedule to meet all the requirements?
We have met every scheduled deadline so far. And I'm telling you, it's an aggressive schedule that the state has put out for us. So Spicer's been working very hard with us to make sure that we've got everything lined up.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just thank you, Jeff, and you and your team. I mean, Manistee's blessed to have, you know, a dedicated workforce like we have. You guys do everything, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
I did have a question about the, I noticed recently that there was a sign put up at the Lighthouse Park of the contamination. I was surprised to see that sign. It's kind of really alarming to people if they don't know the history. And if you could give us a little bit of background on why that sign was put up?
That was part of our internal discussions when we decided to move forward with remediating the park as opposed to removing it. The underlying issue is still there, although we've taken away a lot of the danger, or most of the danger. And we've been working with the Friends of Lighthouse Park to add some additional signage that gives the history, the background, and some of that work that was done. So that's there for liability and information purposes. And so we're looking for something that tells kind of the rest of the story, Bobby describing before the meeting tonight.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in the maintenance must be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens that wish to make comments at this time?
My favorite topic. Okay, I came home this summer on Thursday, and I was absolutely shocked to see that there wasn't even an attempt made to put anything in potholes on Quincy Street. Now, I'm aware that Mr. Turk came here a few weeks ago, and he talked to the city council, and he said that he was sure like to see the street fixed before he dies, like so many other residents on that street has died. So today, what happens is west of Mr. Turk's home, there was forty-two potholes fixed in front of three lots. That's forty-two potholes in a hundred and eighty feet of road, which is something like one pothole per four and a half feet. East of his home, in front of a lady who is ninety years old, who has lived in the street about seventy years, there was forty-five potholes fixed in a hundred and twenty street, a road frontage. So that's like one pothole on every two and a half feet. So I wanted to show you a picture of what the street looks like with all of the potholes fixed now. Now, it's almost laughable that we have here, I come to these meetings, and we, I hear comments like, oh, we're concerned about the manhole covers, thump, thump, thump. We're concerned about vehicles getting damaged. Well, there doesn't seem to be very much concern about the residents that need to drive down these pothole-infested streets. What's really sad about this is Quincy Street was on a recommended list to be fixed in two thousand and nineteen, is my understanding. And now it's like, oh, well, we're gonna see if we can get around to it in two thousand and twenty-one, or maybe two thousand and twenty-two. Because we don't have the money, and, you know, it's very expensive to fix this street. Well, guess what, folks? The street hasn't been fixed in fifty years. How much financial benefit has this city reaped from delayed and deferred repair and maintenance on these type of streets? So, yeah, people are pretty upset. Yeah, more people are gonna die. The joke right now is maybe the city's not filling the potholes because when people die, they'll just throw the bodies in the potholes. So, yeah, we're pretty upset. So I bet any money, if you guys lived on that street and had to put, with that little potholes, it'd get fixed next week. We seen what happened to the last council member who left here. History got fixed before he left the council, didn't it?
My name is Carol Pascoe. I live on Six Ten Spruce Street. And I just would like to comment on the Public Works Department. I lived in three different communities before I moved here down, from downstate, Farmington Hills, Northville, and Plymouth. They're all very nice communities. And I have found our Public Works Department to be absolutely wonderful. I have been incredibly impressed by all that they do and superior to any of those three communities. So I would like to thank them.
Thank you. Are there any other, other comments?
Can I just say one thing, too? You know, I was gonna start off saying, you know, I was trying not to get upset because you guys really inherited a mess. So I know I came across angry. I apologize for that because you guys have really, your hands full. But I'm not sure we're really staying focused enough yet, so.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Hey, guys, how you doing? My name is Patrick Wilson. I'm at 281 Fifth Street in Manistee. I've lived here for now two years. Brought my family up from Arkansas where I graduated college. In the town that I'm at, the crime rate is the highest in Arkansas, and Little Rock is there, too. And then also, their public works, they don't really have one. So moving to Manistee was like a blessing for me. And then seeing what we're actually doing is really wonderful. Looking out here and seeing like I'm the only young person, or the only youth that are youth, that they say, is kind of depressing to me and it makes your guys' job a lot harder. So I wanted to make sure I introduced myself and make sure that you guys knew my mission statement was to help with the youth. Those surveys that people take for what Manistee needs, a lot of the kids say the same exact thing. A lot of the money you need or a lot of volunteer hours that you guys need, that's in the youth, too. That's right there at your school. That's something like Boston Boulevard. Obviously, we see that volunteer on the adult side was a little skimping, but every time you asked the kids or the youth to do it, where were they at? They were out there planting. So it's those kind of things. There's also always making an industry out of everything you fix. Out of everything you need to put money into, make sure it's an investment, not just an expense. And I hope to make sure we teach the youth that and of course, influence you guys that way also.
Thank you. Is any other public comments? All right, we'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Attorney.
City manager?
Just a reminder that I'll be out of the office tomorrow and on vacation Thursday and Friday, and then I'll be out again on Monday at 7:00. I need to use my cell phone.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public safety?
Nothing.
Public works?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Plans and zoning?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yeah, I'm only have to, anything we can do with that situation with the fence, that 354 second and 108 Walnut Street. I went by there today, and of course, the guy came to my house and he sat down and talked a little while. I know he's belligerent at that on the phone and everything and that, but it's only like eight inches of Winkler's garage. Is that legal? Is that legal, sir?
Well, that's, it depends on who you talk to. I mean, it's legal to put it there whether the exact location where it sits is, you know, up for discussion. However, Denise and I did have a very, what we consider a productive meeting this afternoon with the property owner and his mother. Spent about an hour talking about things. And he offered some options for an amicable resolution that we're going to follow through with and meet with the other property owners. So we're exploring some different options.
Patrick Wilson, I remember you when you were about this tall, when I sold your parents that house on Wall Street. I'm really delighted to see you come forward. I would like to see you more involved. That would be great. I'm hoping that the work session that we have will include a discussion on pilot proposals that we've had to date. You don't know, I don't know what kind of changes are coming down the pike for, from Third Coast. If they make any alterations or come up with a new proposal, it would be good just to understand what we've seen so far. So those are my only comments.
Patrick, I just want to say, good luck living on Fifth Street next to the Winkler's.
Right?
You can be part of a fence six foot higher.
I just, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned about the deer call. I just want to keep that in council's thoughts. Couple of years ago, it was dropped. Get a lot of complaints about deer, especially now that the young ones are being dropped. We're going to have more than ever. And I would like to see this on a work session, future work session, to come up with a plan, a sustainable plan. I've got just a few items here. Elks Flag Day, the 14th of June at 7:00 PM, Elks will be performing their across-the-country Flag Day ceremony on the back deck of the lodge. If you've never attended, it's a, it's a very informative and patriotic event. Catholic war veterans, the American Legion, the VFW, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the Elks Clubs. A lot of civic organizations are party to that, and everybody is certainly invited to, to be there. June 24th is the, is the date at the Elks between 5:00 and 8:00 for the City Staff Recognition Day. I believe emails have, have been sent out. The, the, any council members that would like to contribute to that can, can get with me. We're not, we're not having anybody bring anything. It's not a potluck. We're not preparing anything. The Elks is, is going to prepare the food and take care of the, the Elks officers will be serving the city staff also. So that's a good event. Two times this weekend, and I know I've raised the issue at, at the Rimdeals on, on First Street parallel, but on two different instances this weekend, when I went by there, there were catering vehicles and other vehicles parked within 10-foot of the intersection because other people had parked in, in the parking, and there wasn't any space. There's no way, when they do that, to get by those vehicles without crossing the W. L. lines to go towards 31. And they were there for an extended period of time. And in the future, I will call the police department and notify them that the vehicles are there, but it is, it is a dangerous situation. And, and I'm speculating, we can either create a caterer-specific parking spot or something if we're wanting to pick up activity there or, or do something to limit the illegal parking and, and the potential hazard. Because there's, there's no way with, with a vehicle waiting to make a left turn onto Maple Street and one going across with that vehicle parked there that another vehicle could have got by. I just, just bring that up for comment. At this time, we have consideration of a closed session for union contract negotiations. City manager Thad Taylor has requested a closed session this evening as permitted by the Michigan Open Meeting Act, Section 8(c) to discuss contract negotiations with the United Steelworkers. At this time, council could take action to proceed to closed session under Section 8(c) of the Michigan Open Meeting Act.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gitzbied and a second by Councilman Zalinski. Is there any discussion? Please take a role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yep.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor of Tamsalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gitzbied?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodland?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoddan?
Yes.
And Nearest?
Yes.
We'll stick to it.